Hi, it's Counselor Santos checking in.
You're coming through, Counselor Santos, thank you.
Welcome, everybody, to the Planning and Development Committee meeting. Today is Monday, July 31st. I will call this meeting to order as we begin today's meeting. We would like to acknowledge that we are gathering here today on the treaty territories of the Mississaugas, of the Credit First Nation, and before them, the traditional territory of the Huonashonah, Huron and Wendat. We'd also like to acknowledge the many First Nations, Métis, Inuit, and other global indigenous people that now call Brampton their home. We are honored to live, work, and enjoy this land. Good afternoon. I would, I'll start by doing roll call. Deputy Singh, Deputy Mayor Singh.
President.
Counselor Santos.
Present.
Counselor Vicente.
Present.
Counselor Barr.
Present.
Counselor Keenan.
Present.
Counselor Maderos.
Present.
Counselor Fortini.
Present.
Counselor Tour.
Present.
Counselor Power. Mayor Brown. We are now at approval of the agenda, and I'm about to see Counselor Singh's name on the board. Counselor Singh.
Thank you. I have, I will be referring. I'm going forward to the next planning meeting. I just want to understand more truck parking under the board sign and ten.
Okay. You'll also move the approval of the agenda, all in favor? That carries. Declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Counselor Tour.
Mister Chair.
Counselor Tour.
Okay. To declare a conflict of interest on item 7.3 regarding the MTSA's, a member of the family that owns property that's affected by the MTSA's.
Thank you, that will be noted. Counselor Cor Barr.
Thank you. I would like to declare a conflict of interest. My family has an, owns area in the downtown area.
Under, for the MTSA?
Yes, please.
Seven, that's 7.11?
Yes.
Counselor Tour is 7.11 as well, or 7.3? Am I getting my numbers mixed up? No. It's both at 7.11. Counselor Vicente.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I would like to declare a conflict on item 7.3 for the downtown development permit system as I own property in the area.
Thank you, Counselor Vicente, that will be noted.
Under our consent agenda, we, I will now read off the items that are under the staff presentations and planning reports. 7.1, Staff Report: Supplementary Information on Residential Driveway Widensings. Any holds? Consent. Staff Report: Application to Amend the Official Plan, WSP Canada Inc., Infrastructure Ontario, Northwest and Northeast Corner of Tompkins Road, Highway 407, Overpass Ward 3. Consent. Item 7.3. Main Street North Development Permit System: Comprehensive Review and Minor Amendment Process.
Hold.
Hold, that was Counselor Maderos.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. Item 7.4 was deferred. Item 7.5. Staff Report: Citywide Community Improvement Plan for Office Tax Increment Equivalent Grant Application for $7,575-10 Financial Drive Kneff Properties Limited, Ward 6. Consent. 7.6. Staff Report: Application to Amend the Official Plan Zoning Bylaw, Glen Schnarn Associates, First Gulf Business Park Inc., 535 Steels Avenue East, Ward 3. Consent. Staff Report: Citywide Community Improvement Plan for Office Tax Increment Equivalent Grant Application for $7,600 Financial Drive Kneff Properties Limited, Ward 6. Consent. Staff Report: 7.8. Application to Amend the Zoning Bylaw, Airport Road, Highway 7 Developments, Glen Schnarn Associates, 9125 Airport Road, Ward 8. Consent. 7.9. Staff Report: Response to Request for Development Charges Relief from Holland Christian Homes. Consent. 7.10. Staff, is a staff presentation, Reasons and Methodology Behind Pedestrian Level Wind Studies.
Through the Chair, this is not a statutory planning act matter, but rather, it's for council's information as we start to intensify as a city, especially in our downtowns and our MTSA's. Staff felt prudent to bring some information to council on rationale.
Let's hold it for staff presentation. Thank you, Mister Ganesh. 7.11 is held by me, which is the MTSA's. 7.212. Staff Presentation: City Comment on Natural Heritage Policy Within the Proposed Provincial Planning Statement.
Through the Chair, this is simply a correspondence to the province to meet EBR posting timelines. The presentation just highlights some of the key issues that staff have identified with the changes to the policy. I'll leave it to the Chair's discretion if you choose to hear it. It's a very brief presentation.
Members of council, it's a verbal update. Would anybody like to hear the update on the natural heritage policy? Seeing none? Consent. Correspondence 1111, we'll put into consent because that goes with the natural heritage policy. The Application to Amend the Zoning Bylaw, North Side of Castlemore Drive, Clarkway. Was that the one that was deferred? That's item 7.4, that was deferred, so we'll defer 1112 correspondence to that later date. And then 11.3, we can hold for now. Charlotte, do you want to go through the agenda?
So, to summarize then, we have remaining as held, item 7.3, held by Counselor Maderos. We have items 7.10 and 7.11, both held, and 11.3 remaining as well. All other items are on consent or have been deferred to a future meeting.
Okay, and it's been moved by Counselor Barr, the items for consent, all in favor? That carries for committee's attention. And going along with the last couple planning meetings, we've had requests for delegations and correspondents come in the day of the meeting, and we will continue to hold the line to say that no delegations or correspondents may come in on the day of the meeting unless it is on a statutory public meeting item. Okay? There are no statutory public meeting items at this point, there are no public delegations. Our first item was held by Counselor Maderos. Staff Report: Main Street North Development Permit System: Comprehensive Review and Minor Amendment Process, Ward 1, and if Counselor Vicente can plug his ears, that would be appreciated. Counsel, sorry, Counselor Vicente, you have your hand up. Was that somebody? Okay. So, Counselor Vicente, we're going to need you to exit the meeting. And then Mayor is going to text you when you can come back in. Counselor Maderos, I turn the floors over to you.
Thank you through you, Mister Chair. Just quickly to staff, just regarding the area in question in the new permit system, I know that there's some, I don't know the exact number, but there's some council-approved, site-specific official plan amendments which were approved already. So, I'm just wondering in terms of, I guess, the future amendments that we're going to make regarding the, this permit system, how are they going to be incorporated?
Yeah, through you, Mister Chairman, I can answer that question for Counselor Maderos. Hello, Counselor Maderos. You're right, there has been some development applications that city staff have processed already for some lands within the development permit system area. Though, that large matter in particular was the Solmar Homes site for Two Towers, just south of, I believe it was just adjacent to Market Street. That matter is now resolved. Going forward, the amendments that staff are noting here really is simply just to the development application fee by law so that we can deal with minor DPS, Development Permit System, applications with a reduced fee standard, which we believe is appropriate as there are some application types that are really tantamount to committee of adjustment application, quite minor. But given the detail that is noted within the development permit system document, certain minor matters cannot be dealt with as a minor variance and rather would have to go through the normal process. But considering the minor nature of some applications that we're anticipating coming forward, we would like to and really do recommend some reduced fee for them. So, that is all to say, Counselor, that as it relates to fees, there is this modest immediate change that staff are recommending. Outside of that, the report also seeks direction to be able to review the matter of development, review permit systems more fully, but through the additional policy work that is going to be completed for the integrated city downtown plan. But that is not a change that is to be occurring just yet and won't have any impact on development applications as of now. So, really, the only change that staff are recommending for the immediate term is fee matter, and it won't have any changes relative to any development applications that are received by us at this point in time or would be received in the near future.
Okay, that's great, thank you so much, Alan, and thank you, Mister Chair. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Maderos. Counselor Maderos, you will move then, item 7.3. It's been moved by Counselor Maderos. Staff Report: Main Street North Development Permit System: Comprehensive Review and Minor Amendment Process. All in favor? That carries. Mayor Brown, you'll text Counselor Vicente to ask him to come back into the meeting? Please. Our next item is 7.10. Our staff presentation on the reasons and methodology behind pedestrian level wind studies. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mister Chair, Mister Mayor, members of council. My name's David Degroot. I'm the manager of urban design. I think I've met many of you, but this is my first time in front of you in a more formal setting, and it's great to be here today. The purpose of this presentation this afternoon is to provide some background and information regarding pedestrian level wind studies. I see they're just bringing the slides up. But really, what we're here to talk about today is to provide some information to council about, as growth and intensification occurs within our city, it's important to maintain comfortable and safe conditions for pedestrians and evaluate the impacts of new development on surrounding areas. And wind, especially as buildings get taller, is an important factor in that and in staff's evaluation of development applications, especially for tall buildings. If I can get the next slide, please. As Brampton has seen more taller buildings, the city, like other compared municipalities, has been requiring the submission of wind studies. Wind is recognized as one of the impact studies that may be required under the official plan as part of a complete planning application. I think what you'll hear shortly is that the most effective wind control measures involve adjustments to the building early in the process and relate to the location, especially regarding location, orientation, height, and massing in the form of buildings. Such adjustments are more responsive to the local wind climate conditions. And because of this, staff has been directly asking for wind studies since 2022 as part of complete zoning applications. Staff has recently also partnered with RWDI to review and refine our existing terms of reference related to wind studies in this working document. And with that, I'd like to introduce Sabha Sonen Nijad. She's a technical director from RWDI. RWDI are global experts in wind as well as other building science considerations, based here in Ontario, and she'll provide an overview of the science and considerations behind wind studies. We're very happy to have you here today.
Hi, everyone. I believe my voice is being picked up, right? Everyone hears me? Okay. Nice to meet everyone and thanks for inviting me to talk about this matter today. Next slide, please. And, yeah, and next slide. So, my name is Sabha Sonen Nijad. I'm a technical director at RWDI. We're a wind engineering and environmental consultant company. Next slide, please. We have, we're an international office, over 26 offices around the world, 800 employees, and if you could go to slide six, please. Our services involve climate engineering, environmental engineering, and building performance, and we provide that for sectors of building, industry, and infrastructures. And really, at core of our expertise is our climate and meteorological expertise that we use to understand impact of climate on urban build environment and people. So, if you could go to next slide. We have five wind tunnels that we physically test buildings in wind tunnels to understand, in addition to pedestrian wind comfort, cladding pressure, structural movement due to wind, exhaust re-intrainment, and so on. We have three in Guelph office, one in our Milton Keynes office, and one in India. And next slide, please. In addition to wind tunnels, we have a water flume that we use that to do simulations for sand and snow. We have a high computational power that we do a lot of computational fluid dynamics studies, and, yeah, that's about it. I will, next slide, please. So, what we want to talk today about is the reasons and methodologies behind guidelines for pedestrian level wind comfort. So, these guidelines are important, we want to talk about importance of pedestrian level wind analysis, importance of the guidelines for municipalities for these studies. When should a pedestrian level wind study be required? And what are some assessment approaches that should be used in these guidelines to be asked for? Next slide, please. So, next slide, please. All right, so, why is pedestrian level wind comfort important for livability of citizens? So, first of all, it improves urban resiliency, promotes urban resiliency. As we're growing cities, including Brampton, we are seeing a lot of people moving to cities, tall buildings are being built, and we want to make sure that we can keep everyone in the cities are comfortable and safe and our outdoor areas are used. We want to encourage active transportation. When climate is comfortable, urban area is comfortable, more people use active transportation, walk around, bike, and less reliance on cars, which also improves the air quality and heat island effect. Makes spaces more comfortable for longer periods of time. We can make sure that outdoor spaces are used for, in the shoulder seasons, so we're not just limited to the three months of summer and we are, the businesses can be opened longer. And then, as the businesses are open, there is definitely a lot more traffic interaction, so the businesses will all thrive, and that helps with keeping the, our cities more resilient. So, next slide. Pedestrian wind is one of the factors that impacts comfort of people in the street, depending on what need, what is needed to be achieved. So, it could be that we're sitting at a cafe and want to have a coffee, or if people are walking around, they don't necessarily need to have lower wind speeds, they're happy with slightly higher wind speeds, but then there is also safety to be considered, and Hawa is too safe. Hawa is not safe and too windy. Next slide, just a few quick graphics to show you some general wind and building interaction. We call downwashing flow when winds hit tall buildings and accelerate to the ground floor, to the street level you all experience as you walk around the corner of a building, feeling that gust of wind. When two buildings are situated side by side, we're seeing that flow between and acceleration between the two buildings. And there are multiple scenarios that we can, we can move buildings around and locate them relative to each other to either increase wind speeds if we need to, or reduce wind speeds in areas that speeds are too high. Next slide, please. So, for pedestrian level wind studies, as I said, there is the safety that's important to talk about, comfort, and then usability of outdoor spaces. And then, in the next slide, just talking about how we are, as we understand how wind can impact urban areas, it's also good to talk about how can we make it better? We definitely can work with a lot of designs if we are getting involved very early, work with design changes to the massing of the building and orientation and urban, like, changing the orientation of streets or buildings. And as we get more into refinement of this study, then we work with smaller mitigation features such as screens, canopies, landscaping eventually. So, giving those guidelines to builders and architects would be helpful to understand what is it that they can do with wind. Next slide, please. Yeah, so why is it important to have guidelines? And in the next slide, please. We are, City of Brampton has its own guidelines for pedestrian level wind studies, and right now, we are just working with them to refine it and have a little bit more specific requirements so that everyone is on the same page. So, slide 17, if you don't mind. So, the guidelines basically provide directions. They set a requirement that new building applicants must assess the pedestrian level wind, which again, already exists, and it provides clarity that when are the, when are the assessment required, and when it's not, outlines the requirement that needs to be assessed, helps to understand the results of the assessment, and then ensures that all developments are held to the same standards. Next slide, please. And next slide. So, what needs to be included in these guidelines? So, trigger is one of the main thing. It is, again, in the current terms of reference, but I just wanted to highlight that that's one of the most important things. That identifies when a building, when a project needs to have a wind study done. So, there could be height of a building, closeness to different areas, important areas around the city, if it's close to water or close to schools, for example, or parks. There are cultural and natural heritage areas that might want to, be one way to address, and then some more pedestrian sensitive areas. So, these are densifying, as you can see here, City of Brampton from 1965 to 2020, a large, a big difference in how there are taller buildings and more dense buildings around. So, it's important to consider all of that and once, once in a while, upgrade and update these terms of references to reflect the changes to the building. When there are not a lot of tall buildings around, the limit of what building considers tall is different than when the, like downtown Toronto, you have a very dense core, so that would be different. Next slide, please. And really, it's important to identify when these studies need to be done in application process. So, the key is as early as we can get involved in the application process, that's the better. We can make adjustments to the building design, and at detailed design stage, it might be too late to really resolve wind problems. So, then we are limited to just canopies or screens, and it might not be as feasible to do. And cities would need to customize their step based on the individual application process stages. So, next slide, please. So, quickly, I want to show you three of the main approaches that we use, or any consultant we use. The first one, if you could go to slide 22, is a desktop or experience-based design review. So, this is based on experience of a macroclimate or wind specialist. They use their experience of multiple studies they've done in wind tunnel or computational studies in the past, they're using their knowledge about the region, the wind information of the city, and basically, they do, they highlight red flags. They say which areas there might be a problem. It's not a quantitative study, it's conservative, just to basically just highlight where the problems are. They're quickly done and they're rather inexpensive. And then, the next slide shows our computational fluid dynamic studies, or again, these are not just RWDI's, anyone can do these. There are many tools available for computational studies. At the level that most consultants use it, it is a qualitative study, so it is a level higher than an experience-based, but still. So, it is, um, a level higher than an experience-based, but still, um, at a level that, um, you would still need to do more detailed study if, uh, you want to get more numerical results. But, um, these are very visual and nice to understand, and, um, that's something that we recommend a lot of the times to be done. And the next level, next slide, please, would be our wind tunnel studies that, um, instrument around the building with, um, sensors locations, what you see in, uh, black dots, any areas that's important, that we want to understand the wind conditions. We instrument it, and then using the wind tunnels, we, um, run the simulation, physical simulation, and do analysis on that. Next slide, please, and just to highlight that the wind tunnel is, of course, the most, uh, demanding, most expensive, and takes the longest, because the, the resources are not always that available as, um, computational studies. Um, and that's really it, actually. The last slide, I just wanted to highlight slide twenty-six and twenty-seven. If you could go to twenty-six, just show, to show some other terms of references and guidelines we've worked with other cities, such as City of London in England. We developed it for them, and they're actually, they're asking for, um, quite a, an extensive requirements for wind, um, and for cyclists. And the next slide shows, um, some screenshots of City of Toronto's terms of reference that we worked with them, that has been used, um, as of last summer. Um, and they also had it, had it in terms of reference that was updated. And, um, yes, that's really about it. Thank you, Brian.
Well, thank you very much for, for coming, and for members of council, for members of committee, um, so now I think you see why it's so important. You know, when people come to you, or developers or something, say, we don't need a wind study. It's very important that we have a wind study, because what we do on our daily jobs is how we make sure that nothing affects other people. And having a wind study like this is, I think, something that, you know, we, we know going forward how it's going to affect that wind on future developments, and this is a study that, you know, I think is, uh, sim- simple enough for, uh, for the, for undertaking in, in the industry. It's a lot simpler, I think, than, you know, figuring out the red side day's habitat. So, I think something like this is, uh, something we need to continue to push. But not only that, it's when future developments come in, we have the data to show how that, how what we've already done is going to impact them as well. So, and then how do they continue on, right? Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for, uh, coming today. And was there anything else staff wanted to add? Nope, we're good. Been moved by Councilor Power, receipt of the staff presentation, reasons and methodology behind pedestrian-level wind studies. All in favor? That carries. Next report is item seven point eleven. It was held by myself. And, uh, we have two people with conflicts. We'll wait for a minute. I'll be short. So, um, if there aren't anybody else, I'll just, uh, kinda, I have some, um, simple changes that I, I would like to make. Um, the one in recommendation number four, uh, staff has, uh, requested that that public meeting be in August, not September. So, if we can cross that out in the recommendation and put in August, uh, instead of September. And then, recommendation number two, um, I'm uncomfortable with it saying being endorsed in principle prior to going to public meeting. Uh, so I think that we cross that out. Just so the part, it's appendix two to this report. And we'll cross out be endorsed in principle. And then my only, I'm not going to make any, uh, additions to the recommendations, because, again, I think before it goes to public meeting, that would be, um, a little bit out of line. Uh, but what I would like staff to, to consider, um, that there be some kind of ratios, uh, to be considered, uh, and to come back, um, either after the public meeting, or at least discussed at that public meeting. You know, we look at some of the areas, we wanna hold on to as much offices as possible. But I think all of, I think, you know, I've spoke about it for nine years. When I say a job is a job is a job, a job today is a job is a job is a job, whether you work at Costco, um, full-time, or you work in an office building. Today's in, office environment is definitely different than it was prior to COVID, and, you know, we have studies and we have consultants that are saying it's, it's a hybrid model. It's something different now. Um, so what I'd like to essentially do is you look at some of the, some of the lands within the MTSAs that have been zoned for office for, you know, ten, fifteen years. A lot of those areas would have been developed by now if they could have been developed by now. You know, the, it's, you've had, you've had Walmart take a look at, at one particular site, and, uh, and that didn't, didn't amount to anything. So, you know, a lot of these lands now sit and sit and sit for a long period of time. And I think we have an opportunity for us to look at those lands to get them in the best use possible. What is that best use? Well, that's to be determined at a later date, when that, you know, landowner and, and us, uh, work together to see what that best use is. It's not a blank slate where a developer can come in and say, I wanna put a thousand units there. It's not what we're saying. What we're saying is, we wanna work together to find that best use of that property. So, um, what I'd like to do is have some kind of wording, maybe even a different color, to, uh, to, to talk more a lot about, uh, potential ratios that could be, uh, uh, brought into, to certain areas. Um, who determines that ratios? Well, we determine the ratios, but we work with the private sector, the industry, studies that, you know, weren't paid for by the private sector, studies that we've undertaken to see what, um, what can go in these areas. You know, you look at MDA is a perfect, perfect, uh, uh, opportunity, perfect, um, partner, that, uh, we moved them from one area to another. Wasn't a, much of a creation of new jobs, though. They were already in Brampton, right? But it is a creation of a beautiful building, and as the mayor would say, we'll no longer be saying hello Houston, they'll be saying hello Brampton. So, that's just, uh, for staff to take into account and bring back at, uh, when it does come back to, uh, uh, to council, but it is not by way of, uh, a form of emotion or anything, it's, uh, um, just with, uh, a request. And then we'll deal with that at a later time. Are there any other questions to, any other proposed changes to the recommendations? That be endorsed in principle, be taken out, and that it be moved by, from, uh, from September to August? Seeing none, nobody on the board? Nobody online? Been moved by Councilor Keenan, all in favor? That carries. Our next, oh, we'll move the, uh, correspondence, also been moved by Councilor Keenan, correspondence on the primary, uh, major transit, transit station areas, preliminary land use plans citywide. Be received. Uh, we have no committee minutes, we have no other business. No referred correspondence is completed. Are there any questions of councillors on anything that we've reviewed today? Seeing none, public question, period. This is an opportunity for the public to come down and ask any questions that they would like that's on the agenda. I guess I'm looking at you, Sylvia, come on down. Thanks, Sylvia, welcome.
Hello, yes, and this is on, the MTSA thing, is that going to be covered, or?
Anything that was on the agenda today, you can ask a question.
Okay. So, I've looked at the MTSA stuff, and I have been to a number of meetings. I'm at Councilor Power at one of the meetings, it's nice for him to attend a meeting with residents. So, my concern is the provincial government has set us a target of a hundred and thirteen thousand units by twenty thirty-one. As we all know, the city has done approximately six thousand starts since then. So, in order to meet that target, if we're assuming it starts, that means we need to hit fourteen thousand starts per year. The city's numbers, if we're looking at the development and, and proposed MTSAs over twenty-five years, is three thousand. If we double their concerted investment, say it's six thousand, that is still less than fifty percent of the proposed units per year. There's a number of sites here, like, across the street from the go-station is still, is still proposed for low-density housing. There's a street behind that, it's narrow, it'd be complicated for a developer to do, but, hey, hey, we have a development one hundred, three hundred feet from a go-station. You can probably get a developer who'd look to take a crack at that. There's also development east along Centre Street, uh, not Centre Street, along Church Street, where we have planned bike lanes and stuff. This is still low-density, as, as Councilor Santos has been a big advocate of, we need more cycling stuff. In many cases, th- this is low-density, less than one kilometer from a go-station, which now has, do they always go? And we're getting weekends, I think we already now have weekend service, and there's plans to increase it. So, it's, how are we going to make sure that our primary major transit station areas are actually going to be able to accommodate the intensification necessary to ensure that we're focusing our intensification there? As the province has set out, and in areas that the city has desired, explicitly desired, like downtown. And how are we counting to make sure that they're also working with other plans? We can make sure that we're having development that's conducive to growing active transportation? Because one thousand one hundred meters from a go-station in a straight line in a protected bike lane is pretty easy to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, do you wanna come up? You're on this, right? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, through Sylvia, yes, thank you, Sylvia, for attending all of our focus group session meetings. We have received a number of your comments and, uh, your requests about adding some more density along some of the key active transportation corridors. We have looked at, and we have made some changes to the preliminary land use plans that you may have seen at the focus group meetings, and that are attached as part of, um, our report today that was, uh, approved by, by Planning Committee. The one site that you are referring to right across from the go-station does have a, a designated heritage property on it. And, um, I think we, that is one thing that we are going to take a look at before we proceed, um, to our statutory public meeting. Um, the last sort of look at it that I took, I noticed that there is a large parking area associated with that, so there might be some opportunities to add some higher density on that one, but we will take that back and look at that and decide if there's any, um, land use changes to that. And we, uh, thank you for your comments on the active transportation, and we'll, we'll look to see if there's any other, um, opportunities to, to add some more density in, but just as expressed in our report, we are beyond the, well beyond, um, the minimum density targets prescribed by the Provincial Growth Plan in, in all of our primary MTSAs. So, there's, there's no shortage on, on, um, opportunities for residential development within these primary MTSAs. So, I think that's key to point out as well.
For sure, and, thank you, Michelle, and, and it's safe to say, like, we don't have caps like Mississauga has, so when an application does come forward, um, in one of the MTSAs, do we always encourage more density specifically? Or will we be encouraging more density specifically within the MTSAs?
It's one of the key focus areas, and I think you'll see through the review of the, um, draft Brampton plan, that MTSAs are one of our key strategic growth areas across the city. So, that's where we want to have our intensification located.
Thank you. There is no closed session, uh, so adjournment. It's been Counselor Tour, we'll move adjournment. Our next regular scheduled meeting is tonight at seven P.M. See you in a few hours, everybody. Thank you very much.